Good evening. Welcome to this forum for the Berkeley City Election. Today is September 25th, 2017. This forum will be featuring the candidates who have filed for the Berkeley City Council. There are five candidates vying for three seats. You will be voting for three for a four-year term. The sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Tara Moon, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of the city of Berkeley. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization whose members do the hands-on work to keep democracy safe. We are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning more about how you can have such an impact yourself, I would encourage you to pick up one of our membership forms here tonight or check our website at LWVOA.org for more information. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any political party or candidate. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidate and the sponsor takes no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask of you, the audience, that you remain silent throughout the forum and please take this moment to turn off your cellphones or at least put them on "Do Not Disturb." We ask of the candidates that you answer the questions with your views only and don't interrupt another candidate. You have an opportunity to ask questions by writing your questions down on a card that our pages Judy Bateman and Kim Adams have. At any time you can raise your hand and they will come to you with a card and a pencil and you can turn that in by raising your hand again. The questions are screened for duplication and relevancy by our two screeners Maria Wilson and Suzie Sherman-Hall. The candidates will be given one minute for an opening statement and then one minute to answer each question and we'll go in rotation of who starts first and I'll cue you. Sometimes I might elect to give them a little bit longer to answer a question if it's something very complicated or something that a lot of people have been asking about, but I'll let you know. All candidates will be given equal time to answer the questions and all candidates will answer all the questions. Our timer for the evening is Judy Lewis. She's sitting there at that table, so pay attention to her for the timing. I would also encourage you candidates to give your answers to the crowd tonight, not to me. I'm not voting in this district, so they are. So let me take this time now to introduce the candidates. The candidates are Stephen Baker, Jack Blanchard, Dennis Henin, and Charles Terrell. And also on the ballot but not with us tonight is Colleen Gravoline and I have a statement that I will read from Colleen when it comes time for the opening statements. So, we will now move into the opening statement section of the forum and we'll start with Mr. Baker. You have one minute for your opening statement.
Hello. My name is Steve Baker and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for coordinating this event and to thank you for attending and learning more about those who seek to represent you on City Council. We find ourselves at an interesting crossroads. On the one hand, our city has received 13 statewide and national recognitions and Berkeley remains one of the most desirable places to live, work, learn, and play. And yet, much work remains, especially with our sewers and streets. Like many of you, my family was and I suffered through multiple sewage floods and we all bump along on roads that need significant repairs. As a resident for over 20 years, almost 20 years, I love this city and I'm very happy to serve this community. My priorities as your City Council member focus on infrastructure, development, and lifestyle and I look forward to sharing those policies and ideas with you tonight as part of this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Jack Blanchard, your opening statement.
Thank you. I'm Jack Blanchard. I've been on the City Council for the past six years. A little bit about my background, I'm a retired Army Colonel with 30 years of service. I was in the Army Corps of Engineers where I served as a company commander, maintenance officer, battalion commander, deputy engineer group commander, and US Army Reserve Forces School Commandant. After my active duty with the Army, I joined General Motors as a diesel engineer and became the Assistant Chief Engineer for Diesel Engines and retiring in 2006. I've got a lot of engineering experience. Also while I was in the Army, I was involved in Emergency Operations Center for the deployment of a number of large forces to Europe. So I ran the operations center. That led to my continuing education and later certification by the State Police as a professional emergency manager. I served as a volunteer firefighter for the city of Berkeley for the past 32 years and I currently work as a volunteer emergency manager. I believe my background continue to be of service to the residents of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Dennis Henin.
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight and I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to be here or who are watching from home. And those aren't just empty words. I really mean it. Democracy works best when everyone participates. We come up with better ideas and better solutions when we work together rather than when small groups work in isolation. I think many of us in Berkeley have been asleep for a long time, myself included, but Berkeley is awake now and that's great for our city. As an Officer of Berkeley Citizens United, I'm happy to be a part of this new awakening and to be on the forefront of the efforts to educate and to inform. Of course, I'd appreciate your votes, but whether you choose to elect me or not, I'll continue to do my part in making a better Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Charles Terrell.
My wish tonight is that this will serve as a time and a place to restore courtesy and civility to our discussions. We can present points of view, even if we all disagree, it still be courteous. All too often lately, verbal hand grenades have been hurled and really nothing gets done. Berkeley right now is facing issues that need to be addressed right now. We need to refocus the priorities of city government to public safety, sewers, and water and roads. Recently, the Planning Commission has approved applications that did not contain completed rain-water detention plants. We all know the results of a lack of focus, wet basements. Parks, really all the city green space, should be huge sponges to hold the water. Better a wet park than a wet basement. Councilman Kadekell has referenced needs because of years of demolition by neglect. A demolition by neglect is really what killed the ice arena. There are alternative ways to the usual ways of funding that have not really been explored. It's time to refocus our priorities and for new ways of thinking and to fulfill those priorities. I'm one to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. All right, we will start now with questions and we're going to start, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, a statement. Statement from Colleen Gravoline who could not be with us tonight. Colleen says, "My desire for privacy has lost the battle against my desire to be straight with you. Breast cancer has reared its ugly head and as a result, I will not continue actively campaigning. While the prognosis is good and detection was very early, simply the word cancer shakes the strongest among us. As able, I will fulfill council duties over the next month, but my primary focus must be my health and my family. Your support thus far has been incredible. Now I appeal for your understanding. Thank you." Okay, now we will go on to questions and we'll start with Mr. Baker. Tell us what unique personal qualities that are needed will you bring to City Council? Tell us what unique personal qualities that you will bring to City Council, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, and my heart goes out to our colleague and friend, Colleen Gravoline. The battle that she's facing is tremendous and I know all the city is united in sending her good wishes. As far as my unique characteristics and qualities, I bring a combination of practical experience here with the city as a leader in technology and process innovation and at the county and state level to bring people together to talk about problems and come up with creative and innovative solutions. When we look at what's going on around us and we see how far the city has come, the recognitions and awards that we've received, those don't just happen. Those come about by people working hard and working together. Those are the things that I like to do and I have the ability to help make that happen. I look forward to continuing to do that in your service to continue to move Berkeley forward as a region and as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard.
Thank you. Excuse me. As I told you in the opening, I'm an engineer. I spend a lot of time with drawings and plans that come before the city budgets and that sort of thing. So I think I brought a lot to that. I've just been studying a lot of sewer layouts lately, as I'm sure you all are aware that we're heavily involved in that. There are a number of things with my six years of experience on the City Council, I have served on committees to get this, excuse me, the city manager and the city attorney. I think that I've got a lot of good ideas yet and I'm looking forward to doing those and supporting whatever I can to make the city better. We've got a lot of challenges in infrastructure, we've got a lot of challenges in funding, we've got a lot of challenges in things like the ice arena and I think we've got some good ideas coming on those, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin.
Yeah, my background's computer science and mathematics. That's really logic focused, so I bring a logical method, you know, methodical approach to problem solving that I think will serve the community well. And I think one way that anyone who knows me will describe me is hardworking. I am a hard worker. I'm dedicated, passionate about Berkeley and looking into deeply researching, teaching myself on the issues that we face and making sure that I fully understand something before I, you know, move forward with something. Communication is another important thing that I've really been hammering. You know, not only do I want us to do a better job getting information out to the residents, I want to make sure we're doing a better job listening. I want to get, we have a lot of talented people in the city. I want to get ideas from as many people as I can and getting those kind of ideas from lots of people are going to make sure we come up with the best solutions for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell.
I come from a finance and process background. Budgets, the size of the city budget are small for me, but I can cut some zeros off the end and I can understand it. I'm also one who's been involved for years and years and years with processes and I worked cross-functionally. My function could not decide anything by ourselves. I always had to work with the engineers and the metallurgists and the operations people and the finance people, the accountants and everybody else. So I work with everybody and I can get along with everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Blanchard. The question is, "What is your analysis of the relationships between the city, the DDA, and the Chamber of Commerce?"
Thank you, that's an interesting question. I am the liaison from the council to the chamber and so I work very closely with the chamber. We have an excellent working relationship with the chamber and with the new DDA Director, Vivian Carmody, that has just taken over, they have a lot of excellent ideas moving forward. So I think we've got a lot of things that we can do for the city. They're bringing in things like, continuing to bring in things like the Art Bash, the Oakland County, Oakland, County Oakland Irish Festivals and those types of things to bring people into the city. The DDA is doing a lot of advertising now to get the word out that Berkeley is one of the few cities that doesn't have paid parking here, everything is free and bring people in. So we're doing a lot of that both with the chamber and with the DDA, so excellent relationship of all three of those organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin.
Yeah, the city, the DDA, the chamber, I've seen a lot of good things now that we have Vivian Carmody working with the DDA and I've been very pleased with the changes that we're seeing with the increased events, the increased exposure that the city's getting. But I also want to make sure that we do it respectfully and do it within the context of the volunteers and the existing work that's already being done. So I want to make sure that we continue to grow those relationships with the DDA, the chamber, that they continue to, you know, sponsor a lot of our events that couldn't happen without their help, but that we also make sure that we respect the past and do things well together in a spirit of cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell.
Well, I think things are going pretty well. I really enjoyed the art that was done over here off of Coolidge and adding to that with all the murals that were done and I have talked to some of the people who were involved in actually painting the murals and the work and everything that went into that all came through these kind of relationships and it worked out tremendously well.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker.
Yes, I am the liaison to our Downtown Development Authority, DDA. For the last 10 years, our DDA had been saddled with the debt from the prior intersection at 12 and Coolidge. And so when we finally had some additional funding available to do more than just pay off that, it was my priority to bring on board the DDA Director Vivian Carmody. So I helped bring her on board as part of that process and ensure that the activities that you've heard about were accomplished. As we talked about the art about towns, the murals, the chalk, the promotions and marketing, and speaking of which, there's a design guidelines workshop this week's Wednesday, just a couple of days from now. So if you're interested and available, we'd love to see you there to hear your voice, to help make a difference in our downtown. The decisions that go into the design guidelines will be influencing our downtown for decades to come and your voice will help add to the great work that we've done across the DDA, the chamber, and the city to make these vibrant events safe and fun for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Henin and I know this is a big topic here in Berkeley. "There have been many concerns with flooding in Berkeley. Do you feel that the city has properly handled this situation? Why or why not?"
Well, it's easy to look back, cast blame on things that weren't or weren't done. I think things could have been done better. When we had the flood in 2014, there is, you know, they started down the right path, but I think more could have been done. We needed to start looking at retention citywide. We needed to start looking at things such as, simple things such as silk fences to keep debris out of the sewers when we're working. But we also needed to start working at a regional level. You know, it's not just our local problem, but we also can't just say that, you know, this is too hard, we can't do it ourselves and do nothing. We needed to start working three years ago on solving these problems and just because something like separating the combined sewer system is going to be expensive, it's the way we need to go and we should not just give up because it's going to be hard.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell.
Well, in the three years since the big flood and then we just had another smaller flood, some things have been done. The city has spent, got a grant and spent almost $700,000 to send video cameras through the sewer system to inspect things. But in this last flood, I heard a radio report who, they said, "Well, the sewer system worked as designed." Well, if part of that design is flooding basements, we need a new design. Another thing is we've got departments in the city working at cross-purposes. Parks and Rec has been putting new drainage into the parks that just drain the water back out into the streets. Use the green space as retention areas for the water.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker.
Thank you. This is obviously important to so many of us. I was hit in both of those floods and suffer with many to look for additional solutions. Building on the work that's already been done with the SAW grant and the retention plans that have been working in place, we have been working with our Water Resource Commissioner at the county level and our neighboring communities to talk about additions and enhancements to the 12-town drain system. We have a three-point plan that includes actions that will benefit at the resident level at their homes, across the city, things we can do here for additional retention, and then at the regional level as we talked about with our county water commissioner. It's been, it's a difficult time for us and by moving these policies forward, providing funding for residents to do things like the backwater valves, rain barrels, other ways to keep water out of the system and ensure the water that gets into the system moves as designed from, the current designs from back in the 60s, we are in a good shape to tackle this problem together.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard.
Thank you. The SAW grant that was talked about earlier was a jump off on starting this solution of this problem. That allowed us to do GIS locating, locate where all of our lines are very accurately, both X and Y and Z coordinates, so we know the elevations. This whole system in this town is a gravity system and when we talk about combining, or separating the combined sewer system, you've got to realize that when it leaves the city in 132-inch main down on Oxford, that's a combined sewer. So if you separate it in the city, it's all going to go back into a combined system down there and that's part of where the problem is. The problem is these large sewers are getting full. We need an early warning system to tell us when the rains are coming, how much capacity we have left, and that's what we're working on now. We're doing capacity study and node analysis to determine if we can tell and how we can tell when it's coming and what we can do with better retention, covers on the streets and slow the water down. There's a number of things being done right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Terrell. And if you ever need me to repeat a question, just ask, I'm happy to do so. "Mr. Terrell, do you feel it is the obligation of the city to provide and maintain parks? Also, what is your thought about the new Oxford Park?"
An obligation of the city to?
To provide and maintain parks.
Well, since the city has already provided parks, it's up to the city to maintain them and that's been a bugaboo of mine for years is that the city does not do a good job of maintaining them. The new Oxford Park, the land was purchased with no real plan as to what they wanted to do with that land other than we need more green space. And now they've hired an outside company to come in and talk about different things that could be done with that green space. I think they got the, got it a little backwards there and since we already own the land, I don't know if it can even be sold, but it's something that definitely needs to be looked at, but all parks need to be maintained.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker.
Yes, the parks are actually quite well-maintained. Our Parks and Rec Department does a great job keeping those things as fresh and fun as they can be, ensuring that they're safe for our kids and our families to enjoy and we're welcome, the new addition of the Merchant Park when it comes online. That was purchased in partnership with the school district and the plan was to engage the residents, the folks that will use this, our neighbors and families, to enjoy that park, to be a part of the design process, to ensure that it's done responsibly, environmentally friendly, and most of all, safe and enjoyable for our friends and our families, to continue to provide delightful experiences for folks and ensure that Berkeley is just as lovely as it can be.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard.
Thank you. We have a wonderful park system in the city. It's well-used. The Parks and Rec Department does a great job. We have done a lot of work to drain our parks because our parks have been mud pits for quite a while. The Parks and Rec Department works with the city engineers and works with DPW to capture and control the runoff to get it into the storm sewers or the combined sewers, so it's not just pushed in there. There is a control plan, they know what they're doing and the new Oxford Park is the same way. They run off there, get it dry so the kids and the parents can use that park. We'll control runoff into the sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin.
Yeah, I think it is part of incumbent on the city to provide services for its residents. We have to strike a balance between what we want and what we can afford, but I definitely think the parks that we have are an asset to the community and we should continue with them and continue to maintain them. And Oxford Park, Merchant's Park, it's a rare opportunity in a built-up city like this for us to be able to add park space. And so capitalizing on that and adding additional park space to the city is a great idea and also something I support.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Baker. "Many residents report having issues with zoning and code enforcement. What steps will you take to ensure that our code enforcement and zoning codes are followed and enforced equally, equally for all people, including builders?"
Thank you, yes. The codes are an important part of any type of city dynamic. Those codes are meant to protect us, to keep us safe and to ensure that the environment around us is built correctly. So first, we need to enforce the codes that we have and we need to review the codes to make sure they meet our needs and align with our values. One of the things that we're doing as a community is rebooting that department, if you will. We're reorganizing it into be a department of community development, which is really what codes are all about. The code enforcement needs to be strong, swift, accurate, and appropriate to the nature of the code that's being enforced, whether it's a new construction or the parks that we just talked about, something happening at your household or something down the street, we want to ensure that these are done uniformly and fairly. And with this new organization that we're working on, that will be done and will be tightly controlled by the new director and our Director of Public Works and Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard.
The city is doing a lot of work in the code area. We're currently reviewing a lot of our codes. We've got a two-pronged attack on this. We're reviewing the codes to make sure they're correct and a lot of our codes reflect national and statewide codes and we have to incorporate them. The other thing that we are doing is that we are in the process of revamping that whole department, getting a new director and putting renewed emphasis on that so that we can get the right things done. We want to make this a very safe, very walkable, a nice city for our residents and to do that, we do need to enforce the codes. We need to probably tighten up some of our codes because they're a few years old, but we are in a process of looking at all that now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin.
Yeah, I think the key here is going to be the new Community Development Director position. We need a strong person there that is going to be on board enforcing the codes and is going to hold our code enforcement people accountable, something I don't think we have right now. I think if, there also needs to be a communication point. If people, if something can't be enforced, well, let's teach us why. Why is that? And help us understand, help us learn. There probably needs to be at least some more part-time staff. We see abuse on the weekends when, and in the evenings when there's nobody here to take care of things. And we really need to track the concerns that people report. I don't, there doesn't seem to be any tracking right now. When we've asked for information, it's just not there and you can't see how you're improving, you can't see how you're doing if the data isn't there for you to analyze.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell.
Well, I spent over 20 years on the Berkeley Tree Board and writing codes and updating them on a regular basis was part of what we did. That was the easy part. The hard part was getting the codes enforced. The code enforcement officers were not well-trained and not well-disciplined in getting that done. Hopefully with the new regime coming onboard, that will change. But again, I go back to my process thought. What is the process that code enforcement uses when they go out to look at these things? And builders as professionals in what they do should have a much stricter enforcement. Leaving dumpsters parked out on the street for too long, having sidewalks broken up for a long time, keeping residents from passing, that can't go on any longer. That's got to be stopped.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Terrell. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Blanchard. I'm going to combine a couple of questions that have been coming in on a certain theme and I'm going to give a minute and a half for this one. These are questions about housing. So I'm going to read two questions here. "Some of our senior citizens speaking about wanting to stay in Berkeley when they can no longer manage their home. What are your thoughts on a solution to this problem in a way that is affordable to our seniors?" And then, "There have been many questions about multifamily, high-density housing." This person asks, "Do you feel that Berkeley needs multifamily, high-density housing? Why or why not?"
Quite a complicated question. Any city needs a wide variety of housing. We need housing for all of our people. We have a number of seniors that live in houses now that would like to get out of them and get into their smaller residence, one floor. We need that. We need housing for young families. We need a multitude of different kinds of housing, including some multifamily. Now, we have a committee that has some now, we have the Oxford Towers, we have some apartment buildings, but these apartment buildings that if we build more, need to be tastefully done, need to blend in with the rest of the city to ensure that they look good, that they function as part of the city and they don't look like they're a sore thumb sticking out. So I think that a lot of that is happening. We're looking with the Planning Commission now at a number of projects and we see that happening, but I do believe we should have a wide variety of housing throughout the city so that we can accommodate all of our residents. We have a lot of people here that could look out, you ought to see some, that want to move into a smaller place and stay here and help support the city and they are some of our biggest volunteers in the city and we need to keep them here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin.
Yeah, I do think it's good for a city to Yeah, I do think it's good for a city to have a diversity of housing types. But we are built out. The city's built out. So any additional housing types are going to have to be very carefully planned and are going to have to be respectful of the people that are already living in the city. If we add multifamily, it needs to be done in a responsible way. It needs to be done with appropriate buffering between where people are currently living and the new places. And it needs to fit in with our neighborhoods. So far as senior housing, one of the keys, not just senior housing, it needs to be affordable senior housing. And we're just not going to be able to build large tracts of senior homes. So we're going to have to retrofit some of our current stock of house. You know, as we do that, we try, need to encourage and educate people on things such as universal design and aging in place. You know, it's going to require both educating developers and homeowners as they redevelop their properties. And perhaps we provide incentives for this, such as reduced permit fees. The master plan update that's coming up, we need to look at not just saying we're going to do it, but concrete steps that we can get from where we are now to where we want to be. And we can also look at some of the existing programs that are out there to help seniors take care of the house that they're in now. And, you know, make them aware, educate them of those programs to help them out.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell?
There are programs already in place to help seniors to stay in their houses longer, to help people who need help win their houses longer. I had a neighbor who became very ill, and her house was retrofit, both inside and outside, to accommodate her needs. Unfortunately, she passed several years ago. But people have come into that house and enjoyed what, what was done for her. The high-density housing issue really became a hot button when an outside entity came into Berkeley and said, we don't, we have too high a percentage of single-family housing in Berkeley. Yes, we have a high percentage, but it's not up to somebody from the outside to come in and say, our percentage is wrong. It's, it's really up to the people of Berkeley and what they want to live with. We have affordable housing. We have multifamily housing. We have apartments. We have condos. We have, yes, a lot of single-family housing. But that's, that's what we want. And that's, that's the way it is right now.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. This, the, a home is where your heart is, right? We live in our homes as part of our community and with our neighbors. And the types of homes that we have and the housing stock that's available needs to continue to reflect where our city is going as a community. The conversation around multifamily homes is, is continuing as well. We're not looking for an explosion of those. But yet, we do know we need some degree of incremental growth to accommodate additional needs for our existing residents and for the new residents that we welcome. From the notion of, of the seniors to be able to stay in Berkeley, again, that notion of apartments, condos, owner-occupied residents, those are important. And as mentioned, our city is well-built out already. And so as we look to retrofit and reimagine the existing opportunities that we have within the city, that'll be that much more important. Recently, several of us attended Michigan Municipal League Conference, and this very topic was one of the items that we covered. We had an opportunity to tour these things called small homes. And they really live up to their name when you think about it. 400-square-foot, 500-square-foot homes that are developed in the space where, you know, several of those are developed where a single home used to be. Folks find those to be desirable. And I'm not saying that we're going to do a lot of those, but it might be something that we could at least consider as part of this more robust solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Henin. In the past few years, the city has experienced two major flooding events where our infrastructure was overwhelmed. City Hall, the museum building, and community center have been allowed to become dilapidated, and our much-loved ICE arena has been forced to close. Please talk about any ideas you have to improve these aspects of our city.
Well, there's a lot of things in that question. There are a lot of priorities facing the city. Infrastructure, our city buildings, deferred maintenance that has allowed these things to fall behind. And we need to prioritize it once again. But it's going to be a big ask to come to the people all at once and say, we need three different tax increases just so that we can afford all this. We're going to have to come together with reasonable plans, conservative plans, with how we can tackle this. And I think, put it on the ballot, let the residents prioritize what's important to them and what, what they can bear, what they can afford. It's going to take money, but we need to make sure that we do it responsibly and that we keep in mind the needs and the wants of our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell?
Well, I, I think I talked earlier and I used Mr. Kadekell's terminology of demolition by neglect. And that's really what we've gone through over the last several years. From the meetings that I've been to, there's really no way to renovate the ICE arena. That's, that's dead. But there are ways to fund these things, to fund these initiatives outside of general revenue, general obligation bonds and millages. There are other ways to do this. And these things have really not been explored. And I think that as a council, these, these ideas need to be brought up, brought to the floor, discussed openly, and to get some real answers.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Oh, thank you. Yes, this, it is very difficult to sustain a significant capital investment in our infrastructure. We rotate where it goes. There's a base budget for each of the facilities. And then as the needs arise, like the Zamboni goes under, so we get a new Zamboni, those kinds of things. But it's keeping those things up to date that really is where our employees shine. As best as they've been able, they've been making the most out of the assets that we've been able to provide them with the funding that we have been able to secure. At the onset, I talked about my priorities being infrastructure, development, and lifestyle. And when I think about the items on this particular question, that pretty much covers the gambit there. Our, when we talk about the, the city hall, the sewers and streets, the ICE arena, community center, those items were studied extensively by Citizens Advisory Committee of 15 neighbors and residents thoughtful in their consideration of this. And they provided to us as residents of city, some strong recommendations that it's our duty and opportunity here to carefully consider as we come into the fall and the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
I think you've heard from the other members on the council or the panel up here, all the things that are wrong. I'm going to tell you a little bit about why. And in the period 2002 to 2012, Berkeley was shorted $6 million by the state from what we should have gotten. So that's money we could have put into this, but we had to use the money we had to keep the city running, to pick up the trash, to pay the firefighters, to pay the police. So we did the important things, and now we're trying to catch up. And it's, it's tough, but it's something that we had to do. Another thing that was mentioned, the alternate funding. We had a seminar and we looked at P3, our public-private partnerships. In fact, we advertised a lot of our stuff in the public, trying to get people to come to the table and join us in a public-part, private partnership. And we got no takers. So that's why we're here. That's why we're going to try and figure out what we're going to do. And we're on our own because the state's not going to help us. And the public-private partnership is not going to work for us either. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Terrell. There have been a couple of questions about staffing at City Hall. I'm going to read two questions. What are your staffing and hiring priorities for the city? And why are employees leaving the city of Berkeley?
Well, the second one is the easiest one to answer. A lot of that has to do with pensions. People can take their pensions at a fairly young age and basically take the same job in another community and still get their full pension. I know some DPW directors who have done that. Some of our Public Safety officials have done that. That's, that's an easy thing to do. As to staffing, that's really up to the city manager and how he pulls that together. In effect, city council is a board of directors, and the city manager is the CEO. Those are the, the staffing things are the things that the CEO, the city manager needs to figure out within the parameters given by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. I think our, our employee population represents us. The employees should represent and be a part of our community and, and reflect our values and the diversity that we bring as a community. When I think about the various types, race, gender, their thought, perspective, their background, their experience, I think that's crucial to the employees that we hire, to, to lead those day-to-day services that we as neighbors and residents depend upon. Many of the talent that is in the city and has chosen to head out does so because of the, the ways in which we are able to compensate them. And they build and grow and develop and then move on. So one of our challenges is going to be to retain the excellent talent that we have. We have a very strong group of leaders now with a new director coming onboard with Public Safety, new director coming in for Community Development. And I believe that continuing the type of progress that we've made, we can retain this talent and serve the city for decades to come.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. A few years back, we did a staffing study to determine what position should be in a city our size, what they should be paid. And we have been working toward getting to that point. We have cut some people's pay. We've raised some people's pay. But we're pretty much a midpoint throughout the whole range for these people. So we're not giving them a lot of money. So some of them will get better offers and they'll leave the city. The city council, in fact, only hires two people. We hire the city manager, and we hire the city attorney. And the city manager does all the rest of the hiring. So we, we give them our guidance, but we don't have a lot to say about that. But that's why we did the staffing study, to make sure he knew which positions should be filled and what their pay scale should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin?
Yeah, I really think the top priority for staffing, it should be high-quality employees. We need to make sure we put, you know, as is mentioned, the city manager has the final say for almost all employees. But we need to, you know, make it clear to him that what we want are high-quality people and that we have the things in place to hold them accountable. And if they aren't fulfilling what they should be doing, that we can get rid of them if necessary. I want that to be rare. I don't want people to live in fear. But I also want them to, you know, be doing their job. If we have a lot of people leaving, we need to probably start doing exit interviews, talking to people, why are they leaving? See if we have some sort of systematic problems that we can be fixing. As a council member, I'd want to know from the employees in the city, what do you need from me to make a happy and efficient workplace and try and come with the solutions that you'd need to do your job effectively?
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Baker. What are your thoughts about using the new logo despite the citizens' vote in favor of the old logo?
Sure. Thank you for the question. The Berkeley's motto is "We Care." And our official flag and our seal come from 1961. And we're still proudly in use today. We also have had the opportunity to market to a new generation and compete with both regional and distant communities to attract our new neighbors and new businesses and the new employee talent that we want to lead us into the future. They're aggressively marketing and promoting their communities, and we need to as well. The idea with the new seal is an "and" rather than an "or." We have the, the new branding is the "and" rather than the "or." We have the seal, and we have a brand. And that brand together brings together these two pieces. The seal says who we are, "We Care." The brand says where we are, the place you want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. It was, it was never our intention to replace the existing logo. We wanted something that we could market, we could put out there and look, would look a little different, that we could use as a tagline. And that's what we did. We got, something that is used all over, used with the logo. The logo is still on all the signs. We have not changed it. And right now, we don't have any intention of changing it. We're just going to continue our marketing to make, try and make Berkeley a better city by using our new Berkeley tagline also, in addition to the logo.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin?
I have to say, every time I see the new logo, and I'll call it a logo, I feel a little disgusted. You know, the population voted to keep the old logo. And, you know, there's really no other way to look at it. We can call the branding, we can call it branding if we want, but it is a new logo. And I voted in favor of change here. But that is not what the people voted for. And when I see us continuing to use and even paying for the new logo, that just seems disrespectful for what the people in the city said.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell?
I would have to agree with that. I mean, it, it created a lot of ill will, a lot of ill feelings for a lot of people when the new logo was proposed. So much so that people banded together individually, put a petition drive together, and put it on the ballot, and got it passed not to use the new logo. I think that's very clear. And I think we're just muddy the water by using different terms, by calling, one time calling it a logo, another time calling it branding. Branding is the overall. Branding is not the one little piece. It's all a part of everything. And I, I'd have to agree with Dennis that it is disrespectful to the people who voted as they did.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Blanchard. Many Berkeley City events depend completely on the work of unseen, unrecognized volunteer individuals. What have you and what will you do to strengthen these ranks and to properly acknowledge these worker volunteers?
Thank you. It's an excellent question. A few years back, we tried to put together a volunteer recognition dinner. And we tried to get some money from the city to do it. And we couldn't get any money from the city. So to acknowledge all the volunteers, and there was a lot of them, the city council took up a collection among themselves. We got $600. We got some people to chip in on the outside, and we had a volunteer recognition dinner. I have worked with the MML to see if we could get the language in, in the charter determination. The charter says that the volunteers will not be compensated. And the lawyers have said that a volunteer recognition dinner is compensation. The Township Association says that's not right. And they have volunteer recognition dinners in the township. We have not been able to pass that hurdle yet. So we had a lot of great volunteers that liked to feed them once every couple of years. So they, you know, feel like they're getting something from the city.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin?
Yeah, just today, I was talking with a number of people on this very issue. I think it's really important that we recognize whenever we can, the volunteers, not just the chairman of committees and not just the large visible ones, but people at every level that help the city. The exact mechanism, I don't know what we can do. But I do want to look into that and ways that we can do that. And even just simple things, I know in the past, sometimes people's names have been wrong on the recognitions. Just make sure we are very, you know, clear to get just, you know, every part of that, recognize the, what they, the contribution they've made. And to make sure as we bring in new programs, that we don't upset the work that the volunteers are already doing. Make sure we don't step on their toes. Make sure that we respect the work that they've already put in and work with them and not against them.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell?
Volunteers are the heartbeat of groups like the city. I've been involved at leadership levels of several other volunteer organizations, if you will. And care and feeding of our volunteers, feeding being a euphemism, but taking care of your volunteers is very important. To emphasize that to paid staff is a very important way to actually get it done. Paid staff needs to recognize that the volunteers are that and that they are the heartbeat. They're not competing for your job. They are part of your job. Paid staff needs to be onboard with that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. Our, our paid staff loves the volunteers and knows the importance of all that they do for our community. I was proud to help sponsor that volunteer recognition event and look forward to continuing that program and broadening it further. They always say our budget reflects our values. But sometimes our values exceed our budget. And so that's where the hard work of so many volunteers step in to help make the difference here. From Robina Rhapsody, Berkeley Days, the Holiday Lights Parade, the Art Bash, the County Oakland Festival, Fire Prevention and Awareness Open Hall, Open House, Lids for Kids, public, the list goes on of the kinds of things that are, that are enabled by the city but are really driven by volunteers. That work is crucial to the vibrancy of our community and the passion that they bring. We can and must continue to We can and must continue to support and appreciate them and do so in our closing comments and council meetings and with formal events like the ones that we've already started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Hennan. Could you please explain how you collaborate with others and what experiences you've had being a team member?
I try and surround myself with people smarter than me. I'm going to learn more and get more done if the people around me are smarter and know more than me. I've done this in Berkeley, I've done this in other cities where I've lived and, you know, been head of civic organizations, and, you know, part of the key is to get information from a lot of people, a lot of diverse sources, and synthesize that. And it's a lot of this open dialogue and this communication that brings us to the best decisions and the best solutions that we can have for Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Hennan. Mr. Terrell?
If you're the smartest person in the room, you need to find a new room. And I surround myself with people that know stuff that I don't know. That's been my job, my focus has always been to find those people, find out who they are, who's the expert, the subject matter expert in this area that I need information about, and I'll go seek them out. Social media has made it wonderfully easy to find them, but they're all out there. So that's what I do, is I go out and find them, and not only do I listen to them, but then I take what they say to heart and actually implement what they tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
I love the timing of this question. At our very last council meeting, I quoted Bill Nye the Science Guy, who said, "Everyone you will ever meet knows something that you don't." And that is absolutely the value of collaboration and partnership. My process is to listen, to understand, to respect, and to partner. And when I think about the ways in which I've had an opportunity to do that on behalf of the city, whether it's through the DDA with our new DDA director, the West Twelve Mile Collection of Businesses, these design charrettes, from the Historical Committee with the new book that we published, Exhibits and Displays, our work to bring about the city leadership from the city manager and the study of City Hall itself, and through the Michigan Municipal League with the Save My City Initiative, Regional Transit, Elected Officials Academy, all of those are opportunities that I've represented Berkeley, and I've learned so much and helped establish some pretty good things so far by listening and understanding and respecting and partnering with the folks that know so much more than I.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. In order to collaborate with what's going on in the city, I spend a lot of time in the different departments of the city. I spend time at Public Safety, I spend time at DPW, Parks and Rec, the library. I go to all those places and talk to the directors, talk to the people that are there. I meet with a lot of businesses. Just the other day, I was meeting with the people in the Berkeley Muse over here to get their thoughts on some traffic issues over there. So I collaborate by getting out, talking to people, and I hope people will contact me and let me know if they have any questions, if they can help. I meet with the city engineers quite often on a number of engineering topics, because I have some strong views on some of that, having been in the profession for 40 years. And also, with public safety, having been a firefighter in the city of Berkeley for 32-plus years.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Terrell. What specifically have you done to make you earn the title of community leader?
I spent a lot of time on the Tree Board, and it sounds like a silly thing, but the Tree Board interacts with every other department pretty much within the city. We worked with Parks and Rec, we worked with finance people, we worked with accounting, we worked with DPW, we worked with the legal department. So I got around and got to know people all over the city government and find out how things work. We put a lot of programs in place, a lot of educational things in place through the Tree Board, but we also had some setbacks along the way, and then how we worked on those setbacks is the real legacy of the Tree Board.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. Boy, I tell you, I get most of my experience through my family, my wife, my family, my sister, kids, it's amazing stuff. But here within the city, I've had the honor to serve on city council for eight years, the last two years as your mayor pro tem. Before that, I was the officer on the Historical Committee for many years, helping them with the excellent work that they do. I've been involved with the city manager executive committee search, the City Hall Renovation Committee, liaison to the DDA, Michigan Municipal League trustee, Elected Officials Academy trustee, professional degrees in computer science, software engineering, artificial intelligence. All of that stuff gives me opportunities to better understand where we are as a community and how we can help move things forward. My track record here as a council member positions me to get, to move forward, build on those relationships, and leverage that experience to further move us along.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. Before I got on the city council six years ago, I did a lot of work with the school district. I shared two facilities committees for the school district where we did a lot of improvements in the schools. So I've been around a long time. I previously ran for election for the school board in 1984, probably nobody, I got beat, but probably nobody remembers that. You stay active. If you want to be known as a community leader, you're out in the community. You meet with people, you stay active, you're on boards, you're on commissions, anything that you can do to try and make the city better. We're lucky here, we have a very open office of the city manager. We can walk in there anytime, get answers to questions. If somebody gives me a question from a resident, I can walk in and get the answer for them. So that's what I do, just communications, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Hennan?
I think I'll mention again, my, you know, the hard work and the passion that I've shown, working with Berkeley Citizens United, and just the efforts that I've gone to communicate, educate, and inform the public on the issues that are facing them. But also as a candidate, I've been going out and canvassing, talking to as many people as I possibly can. And even once elected, I plan on holding office hours, have people come in, tell me what their concerns are, tell me what their issues, you know. I really can't, I'm going to be much more effective as a council member if I hear from people and hear what problems they're facing and what their concerns are. And really, I've always been attracted to causes that protect people that need protection, you know. Try and look out for people that need looking out for, make sure that people in power aren't abusing those powers. And that's one thing that attracts me to being a city councillor, is to help protect the people and the residents in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Hennan. Mr., oh, no, we started with you, so we're going to Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
The question is, what is the purpose of Berkeley Citizens United?
Certainly, I know there's someone else on our panel that'll have another response for that as well. What it does, the benefit that I get out of that is that it helps keep the conversation going. I have had far more very productive and positive conversations with residents over the last couple of years, and I appreciate the fact that folks take an interest in what's going on in our community. For quite a while, it was far too lonely sitting up here, and we'd have just a handful of folks that were passionate and committed. The rest of the folks were doing great things outside, and now we welcome them in the room. It's great to see so many faces here today that I've had the pleasure to get to know and better understand their position, understand where they're coming from, and help to move the city forward as a result of the community conversation that we've had over the last several years. I look forward to continuing that dialogue and doing the very best that I can to help keep moving Berkeley forward in respect and on behalf of our residents and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. My view of this is, anything that gets people involved in city government is a good thing. They've got a cause, bring it forward, and we'll see what we can do for it. I would like to see the people out there studying, learning, getting involved, and keeping the city vibrant, because everybody in this room wants the same thing. They want a better Berkeley. Whether they're set up here, they're Citizens United, whether they're just out in the audience with no affiliation, they're here, they're studying, they're learning, and I think that makes it better for everybody. So I really applaud everybody for getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Hennan?
Yeah, one of our primary missions is to educate and inform, make sure that people know what's going on in the city and also know what their rights are. We want to try and protect people, help them to protect themselves, and help hold our government officials accountable for the things they're doing or the things that they're not doing. And I think one thing that Berkeley Citizens United has ended up being is really a catalyst where these problems have been going on, they've been simmering below, but there wasn't a single point where, you know, everybody could focus and be heard collectively. People would bring their concerns individually, and they'd kind of be dismissed by city staff, by others. And now with a larger organization and people speaking more in unison, I think we're starting to get, understand that these problems have been here all along, and now we're starting to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Hennan. Mr. Terrell?
Berkeley Citizens United, to me, is people banding together individually to speak truth to power. For a long time, between paid staff and some council people, plus things like commissioners and boards, people didn't always get a real, fair hearing. They didn't get a true resolution to what they brought forward. This is the way it is, and that's the way it is. And I think Berkeley Citizens United has brought that to the fore now and has a voice to speak to power.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Blanchard. What do you think city council could have done better over the last four years?
Good question. The city council could have done some of the things better if we would have, if we would have had money. As I said earlier, the state has shorted us so much money that would put us in a strain, and we're not able to do all the things we want to do. What we have done is we have maintained the essential services. We have kept the snowplows, kept fire people ready to go, but we have not done anything on infrastructure. The one infrastructure thing that we have done is lining of our sewers. That is a special thing that we keep doing, and we've been doing it for over 20 years, and we've got 28% of it lined now to make sure that the water flows as best we can, and there's a lot more discussion that we can do on that. But what we can do now is just look out for the people's money and make sure that we're doing the right things to rebuild the infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Hennan?
The biggest failure I've seen is communication, both listening, as I mentioned before, you know, but we can be using things, tactics such as less informal means to gather public input instead of only getting things in public comment periods where people get kind of intimidated. And, you know, one failure was the 2015 Master Plan Update, where there was no community involvement, and when nobody shows up for those kind of important meetings, you know you have done something wrong getting people there. We also need to do better getting information out to people. Social media, online is great, but there's also people that aren't online. We have tools such as the Water Bill that information can be getting out. We have public hearings on certain properties. Put a sign on there, say something's coming up, and we need to modernize our information. Get records from applicants in electronic formats instead of us having to scan them. Get the information out there earlier so everybody involved can analyze better. And streamlining the city newsletter, just so it's easier to read, easier to digest. All simple things we could be doing better.
Thank you, Mr. Hennan. Mr. Terrell?
I think it's definitely a lack of focus. Four years is probably not even a long enough timeframe where we've lost that lack of focus as to what our priorities really need to be. We keep getting sidetracked to try and fix things that should have been maintained all along. It's time to refocus that, and I think with some of the staffing changes that have been going on over the last couple of years, that we're starting to see that focus come back into play. But I think we've actually upgraded in the people that I've gotten to meet so far, and I look forward to meeting our new, two new director hires that are coming on board. I've heard only good things about some of the candidates for that.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. Yes, if we set the Wayback Machine, we remember just four or so years ago, we were coming out of the region in this country's one of the most severe economic downturns, which impacted not only the county and the country and the state, but also our city. That held one hand behind our back in terms of our budgets, and this is our budget. We review this every year, and we are required to maintain a balanced budget, and so that holds us back on the one hand. But making the best use of what we can and what we do have is really what it's all about. In spite of those tough times, we did a lot to maintain the quality services that folks come to expect, that deliver upon the lifestyle that they choose here in our city. There continues to be room for improvement, and as we've made great strides in our communication, in our infrastructure with the Harvard Project, Coolidge North, the Twelve Mile, the sewer relining, those kinds of things, and our DDA investments continue to move us forward. There's great things ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We're coming into the home stretch here. I've got three more questions for you, okay? All right, we're going to start with Mr. Hennan. What endorsements do you have?
I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Terrell?
I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. All I've sought was the recognition and appreciation from my fellow elected officials and, most importantly, my neighbors and residents. When I think about the relationships that I've been able to develop over the last eight years, those have, those folks have appreciated and recognized the work that I've been able to do on behalf of my neighbors and residents here in the city. So, of course, within the city council itself and our neighboring communities, I have developed rapport, and they in turn have offered for me to use their name. But for me, it's about, it's about you. It's about my fellow neighbors, my residents. Your support is what matters most to me, and so I want to thank you for all that you've done and help me be in a position so that I can serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
I have not solicited endorsements yet. I'm looking for the people, the ones that are interested in me supporting them, that's who I'm looking out for. I've getting calls from people saying that they want to help, what can they do, can they get a yard sign, that sort of things. Those are the endorsements that I'm getting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Terrell. Name your top three goals for the city.
Top three goals, to keep and maintain the level that we have in our public safety. Public safety, we haven't talked about it much tonight, but public safety does an incredible job. Unfortunately, over the last year or so, I've had to have some dealings with them. They have done a tremendous job, and we need to recognize them and support them. Second priority has got to be sewers, and third would be waters and roads.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. At the onset, I mentioned infrastructure development and lifestyle as three key themes. We've touched on many of those topics tonight, on infrastructure investments with our sewer line, roads, water mains, surface streets, the development of new households, new opportunities along our downtown. As vibrant as it is, there's so much more we can do with our downtown to make it even better. And then from a lifestyle perspective, we've talked about our parks, we've talked about our public safety, our tremendous library, the fantastic programming that goes on there. They have a great Friends of the Library group. The lifestyle that we have as a community with our safe neighborhoods is so paramount to me. There's lots more to talk about, can't do it in a minute, but those are my three priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. Top is financial. We have very limited resources. For those of you that were the Harvard Project, we had to save up for three years to get the money to do that, two blocks of road. So we're trying to spend the people's money the best we can. By improving the infrastructure, we need to work with the ICE Arena, we need to do a number of things with the roads and sewers. That's second. And third, as you may have gathered, I'm very active with public safety, being a firefighter, so we need to keep the firefighters trained. And I've often said that I'm going to retire from firefighting when I learn the job, and every year, the job changes, and every year, I'm back in school. So we have to make sure that we get those people trained so that they stay current and can do the job that we want them to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Hennan?
Yeah, and I'm again going to beat the communication drum. I really think that it's important that we get information to people so that they can be informed and that we're very carefully listening to what they have to say so we can make the best decisions for them. Code enforcement and public safety, it's not only just keeping people safe, but it's also quality of life issues. So these aren't just flippant concerns that people have, but it really does impact their day-to-day living in the city and how much they enjoy living here. So the code enforcement is really important. And then finally, the infrastructure in buildings. We need to bring back up to par what we have, and then going forward, whenever we bring anything new, I want to make sure that, you know, we have the money, both in the uptimes and the downtimes, to fund and maintain the facilities that both in the uptimes and the downtimes, to fund and maintain the facilities that we have. Make sure that we aren't going to have to start cutting and letting things fall apart if and when the economy gets bad again.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Okay, for the last question, we're going to start with Mr. Baker.
All right.
This combines two questions about rodents in the city. One person wonders if you could please speak to the current rat infestation. Another person asked about rabbits and suggested or wondered if you would support allowing bo-hunting or even shooting by the residents.
Thank you. So, first of all, bunnies are prevalent. They're nice to look at, but they're terrible to try to shoot. I would not recommend that. I think it's a very hazardous idea. There's other ways to deal with those. As far as rodents, the city is taking a very active stance in preparing for and helping residents deal with these. Any form of civilization has this kind of thing that happens with us. Berkeley's been very proactive in providing information. We've had forums at our library. We've had comments here at City Council to provide folks with information about what to do. There's ways that each resident, each neighbor can do to do their part to help reduce this, and we as a city can continue to ensure that the codes that we have are clean and well-enforced in terms of, you know, cleaning up after your dogs, taking care of your bird feeders, and ensuring that your yard and your neighbor's yard is as safe and habit-free as possibly you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. And we do have a rodent problem. We had a talk at the library a while back by some of our exterminating people explaining what, when, how to do things, and I think some people, that helped out. There are a number of things that individual residents can do. The city cannot do a lot other than maintain the ordinances, but the residents can make sure is pick up the pet droppings, make sure bird feeders are in compliance with the ordinance so that bird feed is not being spilled on the ground for the rodents to eat. Now, we talk about rabbits. Rabbits are nice, although there's a couple of them my wife would like to strangle. She sat in the living room and watched them eat her flowers the other night. So, but they can be a pest, but they're also nice to have around, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Henin?
Well, one thing we can hope for for the rats is pray for a cold winter. You know, maybe it'll take care of some of the problem for us. But I think we need to continue with the city's education on what we as individuals need to do for taking care of, making sure there are a place for them to live and make sure that they don't have food sources. Code enforcement comes back into it. When people do call in to report violations of the laws we have on the books to prevent this, that they do enforce it and prevent those kind of harbages and places and food sources for the rodents. And it's a tough problem. We need to look at what other communities have done, what has worked and what hasn't worked for them, and see if any of those are applicable in the city of Berkeley. We also have our own love-hate relationship with bunnies. They're cute, but they totally devastated a lot of our plants this year. But I don't think I'm going to support an open season on rabbits in Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Terrell?
Well, rats are really a hygiene issue, and it's been mentioned about pet droppings and bird feeders, but it's also things like overstuffed furniture that's kept out in garages. That's a great place where they love to live. So, hygiene is a real big thing for rats. As to the rabbit issue, they've been devastating my gardens for years. I would absolutely support an open season on rabbits.[1170.83][1170.83](Laughter) And it's not really dangerous because the rabbits, at least in my area over in the university district, they have lost their fear of people. You can walk right up to them, they no longer fear us. So, I try and put the fear back into them. And if we could ever get the robins and the sparrows to start eating rabbits, then we'd really be all set. But yeah, absolutely, we should allow hunting for rabbits.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. All right, that's the end of the questions. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we have one more question. Let me read this for one second. When you stand back, well, we're going to start with Mr. Terrell with this one. When you stand back and look at Harvard Commons, are you pleased with it?
No, not at all. I think it was poorly designed. I think it was poorly executed. They have too much building on too small of a space. So, no, when I look at it, I'm horrified by it.
Okay, Mr. Henin?
Oh, backwards, okay.[1245.89][1245.89](Laughter)
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Let me go back to Mr. Baker.
Well, I can answer. That's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think having a diversification in our housing stock is good, but what is that Harvard Commons is just too much. The city gave away for a PUD there, and they're supposed to be an attractive building with public green space. It has neither of those. I don't find it an attractive building, and there definitely isn't green space there, not even for the residents. The green space they do have has a no trespassing sign on it right now. So, there could have been better uses of this. And again, this comes down to communication. The residents in that area were there saying this is going to be an issue, and their comments fell on deaf ears.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. I'll just continue with my order here. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. Yeah, Harvard Commons is not the most attractive development we have in the city, but it appears to be selling. People are living there. The good thing about the design of it when it was built, they were forced to incorporate storm water retention underneath that whole building. And there is a very extensive storm water retention. It helps with the getting the water out of that area of the city, because we had some low spots over there before. So, although it's, like I said, it's not an attractive development, it is doing some good in the stormwater area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. I think there was some progress made with the intent behind that project. I do think there's a lot that we could learn from that in terms of the difference between seeing it on paper and seeing it in real life. That followed a process, and there's some other development that's currently following up, same kind of a process. And if and when that initiative were to move forward, I certainly would have some very serious questions about where that initiative might go. But as far as Harvard in particular, the Harvard Commons, I like the idea. As we talked about earlier, the need for diversity in our housing stock is there. I think that by taking incremental steps, we can do the right kinds of things to address the housing needs from our existing residents as they choose to stay in the city, but maybe have a different address, and then to try to welcome additional folks into our communities. So, I'm not exactly thrilled with it, but I do think that there's a lot of positive infrastructure benefits and a lot of learning and growing that we can do as a community to make the next one a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, now I think we're done with questions. So, we'll move on to closing statements. You get one minute for your closing statement, and again, we go in reverse order. So, we'll start with Mr. Terrell.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum, and I think that my wish has been fulfilled. Courtesy and civility has been restored, at least in this forum, and now maybe we've set an example for others to follow as well. We need to refocus our priorities. As I've moved along the city and talked to people, I've listened to what they've had to say, never really heard a whole lot of support about a new community center. There is great sadness at the passing of the ice arena, especially that it was a result of demolition by neglect. Remember, it wasn't that many years ago that a new community center was voted down. Why revisit a settled issue? It's already been settled once. We don't need to have it come up again. Let's renew and keep our focus on our priorities. There's the same old way of approaching issues. From that, we've seen ethics investigations, demolition through neglect, crumbling roads, flooded basements. It's time for Berkeley to have a voice that is willing to challenge that same-old, same-old. Me, I am that voice. I ask for your vote, and I may bring practical solutions to the issues facing our community, our Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Henin?
Yeah. Shortly after my wife Jennifer and I got married, we started looking at where we wanted to put down our roots. We made a big spreadsheet of area cities and analyzed all the pros and cons. When we got to Berkeley, we fell in love. We loved the small-town feeling, the walkable community, the excellent schools, and the great services and public safety. So, my interest in running for City Council is to make sure we preserve the things that make Berkeley Berkeley, the things that attract so many people here and make them want to stay. The city definitely has its problems. All cities do. But by acknowledging them, we can work together so Berkeley can continue to grow in a responsible manner. If you want to find out more about me or the things I stand for, just Google me or search for me on Facebook, Dennis Henin for Berkeley City Council. And I hope you'll vote for me on November 7th so I can continue to make an even better Berkeley a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Henin. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you. In closing, I'd like to say that experience matters. I'm an engineer, and I deal in facts and numbers. I've spent many hours reviewing budgets, engineering plans to ensure the city and the residents are getting the best deal possible. I'm a father, a grandfather, and I understand family values. I want to make sure that the city provides the best environment for families to raise their children. We need to maintain a walkable community and provide well-maintained parks and sports fields for their use. As a retired Army Colonel, I understand what service means. I've lived in Berkeley for almost 40 years. I understand the city's needs and will continue to listen to the residents so that we can move the city forward together. I have served as a volunteer firefighter for 32-plus years. Now that I've completed all of my training, I'm certified by the Michigan State Police as a professional emergency manager. I'm assisting public safety as a volunteer in event planning for the city. Essential characteristics of the job up here are experienced leadership, ability to work with people, and have insight and understanding on how municipal government operates. I believe I can continue to be of service to the city by serving on the council. Ask for your support in the election. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, and I want to say Godspeed to Colleen, and our thoughts and prayers are with you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. I'll continue that. Colleen, take care, get well. We miss you, and we hope that you will be well soon. And thank you for this time to share my experience and plans. I bring a strong work ethic, professionalism, and positivity that benefit the city. As a longtime resident and engaged member of our community, my top three priorities are infrastructure, development, and lifestyle. I'll drive investments that improve our sewer lines, water mains, and surface streets for our households or city in our region. In alignment with our vision and our values, I will balance new construction, city infrastructure, and parking needs with the desire to grow the city responsibly. I will ensure our neighborhoods, parks, and library are safe and enjoyable, and develop a vibrant downtown with fun activities and great businesses. I'm committed to serving the city. My name is Steve Baker. I ask for your vote and for the privilege of to continue to serve you and this great city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. The League of Women Voters would like to thank all the candidates for their participation tonight. We would also like to thank the audience for your great questions. We would like to thank WBRK, the community TV station that filmed tonight's forum, and also the staff at City Hall for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates and more, check out the League website for our voter guide. We will also post rebroadcast times when we know them. The channels for WBRK are 17 on Comcast and 10 on Wow. Our League website is LWVOA.org. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of 18. Remember to vote on November 7th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you very much.